We're here this evening to have public input on the budget. And I'll ask Mr. Neighbors, Sid Neighbors, I believe, to come up if he would like to make some comments.
Chairman Ms. Byram, Vice Chairman Dr. Brooks Buck, Superintendent Dr. Whitney, members of the School Board and administrators from Suffolk Public Schools. Good evening. I'm Sidney Neighbors, a 7th grade teacher at John Yates Middle School, where daily we embrace our motto of every charger, every day, as well as reinforcing responsibility, respect, and safety with our students. But I'm here tonight before you, however, in my role as President of the Education Association Suffolk, the local affiliate of Virginia and National Education Associations, and our members across the division, including teachers, administrators, and support staff. Proudly, we're here tonight to represent the VEA's Red for Ed campaign to bring light to the needs of our members, our schools, and our students across the Commonwealth of Virginia. I'm here tonight for my annual budget visit. But first, I'd like to say that the EAS is fortunate to have a great working relationship with both our Superintendent Dr. Whitney and our Executive Director of Finance, Mrs. Wendy Forsman. As I travel around the state and talk with my VEA colleagues, I find such positive relationships between associations and school administrations are not the case in many locals. I speak with Dr. Whitney and Ms. Forsman regularly and share questions and concerns from members, and they work with us to provide timely and understandable explanations to me that I can relay to answer to members. In addition, we appreciate their one-on-one explanation of salaries to individuals and groups of members when needed. Please know that these efforts do not go unnoticed and are greatly appreciated. Each year, we advocate for appropriate salary increases for our members and the Suffolk Public Schools employee population as a whole, and this year is no different. After a much appreciated explanation of the Governor's 5% salary increase, which we've heard lots about in the news through the state by annual budget, and explaining to us, to me specifically, exactly how it works on the local level, we respectfully request that the School Board adopt the budget as presented by Dr. Whitney, and we pledge to follow through on this support with City Council as needed and appropriate. I am more than willing, if needed, to address City Council again this year, and will encourage members to do the same, as well as lobbying that body prior to meetings and votes. When we, as an association, advocate for our members, we always remind ourselves that we are ultimately advocating for our children. As such, maintaining a well-compensated staff to provide and support high-quality instruction is paramount to the welfare of our students and their futures. Our students deserve the best, and I'm proud to be here tonight, just like I have been many other nights before, to advocate for our members and ultimately our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors, for your concern. Are there others that would like to speak on the budget? Others that would like to speak on the budget or have concerns for the budget? Anyone else who would like to speak on the budget? If not, we will call this meeting, part of the meeting, closed, and we will reopen in just a few minutes. I open the regular monthly meeting, call us to order, and I ask Ms. Mayo if she will give us the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. And, Mr. Waller, do you have certification of the closed meeting?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting on March 14, 2019 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended.
So moved.
Board members will please vote.
The next order of business is the approval of the agenda. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. If Board members will please vote.
Are there public speakers on the agenda topics?
No, no one has signed up for early appearances.
No one signed up this time. Thank you. Next, we'll have Dr. Whitney, reports by the Superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you can see, the first item that we have on the agenda for reports by the Superintendent is the Communities and Schools Report. This is a program that we were fortunate enough to actually initiate at Elephants Fork Elementary School several years ago, and you'll find that it provides wraparound services for the students that are enrolled at Elephants Fork. At this time, I'm going to call to the podium Principal Jessica Avery to introduce our speaker. Ms. Avery.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, School Board members. Thank you for having me and hearing about Communities and Schools. At this time, I'd like to speak a little bit about Communities and Schools. They've been at Elephants Fork for, this is the fourth year. I've been fortunate enough to work with Ms. Spellman back here for the last four years, and this program has had a positive effect on my school, the community, and the students in particular. To speak on this will be Mr. Watkins, Johnny Watkins. He will explain more about the program, and he is the Development Director.
Evening, Dr. Whitney, Madam Chair, Suffolk School Board members. Again, my name is Johnny Watkins. On behalf of our Executive Director, Dr. Hope Sinclair, in her absence, I stand before you to talk to you about Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads. I ask that you forgive me as I look at my notes. I want to make sure that I capture everything and that I stay within a time limit. It is an honor to stand before you to share who we are, the impact of what we are doing in Hampton Roads, right here in the great city of Suffolk, at Elephants Fork Elementary School, and our need to be able to do more. Communities and Schools is a nation's largest dropout prevention organization and the only one that can guarantee a decrease in dropouts and increase in on-time graduation rates when its model is implemented with fidelity. Communities and Schools is a national-recognized nonprofit organization that has been in existence since 1977, and in Hampton Roads, we've been in here since 2012. Our mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieving life. Nationally, Communities and Schools serves over 2 million students with a 94% graduation rate. Statewide, we serve nearly 43,000 students with an 86% graduation rate. In Hampton Roads, Communities and Schools has a program. We have 11 schools located in Suffolk, Hampton, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Portsmouth, and our graduation rate is 97%. Our vision, every child in need in America will have a community of support in and outside of the classroom. We work directly in the school along with the school staff and administrators. Our site coordinators have degrees in psychology, human services, or social work, and serve as an advocate for the child and the teacher. We focus on attendance, behavior, and course performance, which in turn enhances on-time graduation. We are a K-12 model, and our site coordinators are in the schools every day, building relationships with students and working hand-in-hand with schools, families, and communities to create access to the resources and opportunities that help them overcome life's current and future barriers. Every one of our case-managed students are tracked, measured on a national database for their attendance, behavior, and academics. Our site coordinators serve as a bridge between teachers, administrators, volunteers, community partners, and local businesses to connect students and families with resources that help address both academic and non-academic needs. Our goal is to merely take some of the distraction, distracting pressure off the teachers so that students can come in the classroom ready to learn. Communities and Schools is not a one-size-fits-all approach to changing student lives. That's why our evidence-based model integrates a variety of support for students to keep them in school and on the path to graduation. At every school, we conduct a needs assessment, plan, and provide supports and monitor progress. Some of those supports include family engagement, behavior intervention, academic assistance, social skills, college prep, and basic need resources. During 2017 and 2018 school year, our site coordinator, right here at Elephants Fork, Ms. Iris Matthew Spellman, managed over 69 at-risk students. 100% of them improved in attendance, 93% improved in behavior, 82% improved in coursework, and 94% was promoted. Currently, Ms. Spellman has over 65 students that she's case managing right now by herself. If you were to ask the outstanding Principal, Ms. Avery, who was just standing up here, how much of an impact Ms. Iris Matthew Spellman has made, just watch her face light up as she begins to speak. What a team that they are, and what an impact that they're making at Elephants Fork. So what is my axe, or what is the organization axe? The cost of a full-time site coordinator is currently $66,440. Suffolk Public Schools committed $10,000 annually to support that site coordinator position. This current year, the commitment was increased to $15,000, and we are extremely grateful and appreciative of that. It is our wish to grow and reach an additional Suffolk Schools with the biggest needs. We're asking the School Board to strongly consider adding a line item in your budget at a fair amount based off of our excellent results to continue to bring needed support for these students so they can focus on learning as the teachers can focus on teaching. The bottom line is our site coordinators are doing whatever it takes to ensure all kids, regardless of the challenges they face, have the relationship, support, and resources to thrive in and beyond the classroom. Therefore, we humbly submit or solicit your financial support so that we can make a greater impact right here in Suffolk. Our students are our future. One last thing I would just say, we invite you all out. We are having a Golfing for Kids Tournament, April 11, right here at Cedar Point Country Club, starting at 12:00 p.m. Registration is at 10:30 a.m. I put that in the document that was submitted. Please come out and join us. We're going to have about 12 or 13 kids from Elephants Fork and another 12 from one of the schools we support in Virginia Beach, and they're going to be playing a Part III as the adults play the 18th park course. So it's going to be a great time for them. I thank you for your time, Mr. Superintendent. I thank you for your time, Madam Chair, and your Board members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Thank you. Anyone have comments or concerns?
I could just add, first of all, thank you, Mr. Watkins, but the energy and the enthusiasm that Ms. Matthew Spellman has in this position, I certainly appreciate it. The partnership between Communities and Schools and Elephants Fork is very evident, and students have grown academically, socially, and emotionally because of the program. So thank you very much for being a part of our school division.
I would like to ask Ms. Spellman if she would stand, be recognized. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like to thank you as well. I know it takes a heart to do this. You know, you have to want to do it. It's not because it's a job and you need a job. It's because you have the heart to do it and to help the students, and I really, really appreciate it, appreciate your service.
Hey, Dr. Whitney, we have another report.
Yes, ma'am. Last month, when we met, there were some questions regarding our Technology Department and our technology services that we provide to our students. Mr. Littlefill has actually put together a technology update that will give you an overview as to where we are with technology in Suffolk Public Schools. Mr. Littlefill is our Director of Technology. Mr. Littlefill.
Good evening. As Dr. Whitney shared, you asked for a technology report update, so I'm going to go do my best to give you what you're asking for. I want to, it's been a long time since we've done a technology update for the School Board, so we'll talk about our staff, equipment, and other responsibilities within the department. Staffing, there are 22 staff members in the Technology Department. You see listed the different positions that we cover. We have two vacancies at present. We have one ITRT vacancy, and also one of our server specialist positions are vacant. Sort of to give you an idea of how we're organized, we have divided the department into two supervisory groups. One group is covering our field services, which do the computer repairs. Another part of that team is our network team. They support the entire infrastructure. And our server support specialists. Our server support specialists cover about 192 servers, almost 200 applications, as many other pieces there. The next side of it is our information services, which covers our ITRTs. We'll talk a little bit more about what ITRTs do in a few minutes. Our information system technicians, they handle our state reporting, federal reporting, and local reporting, and then also our help desk. A little bit of numbers. Last month, you asked questions about numbers of computers. 13,800 Chromebooks. Currently, our enrollment is around 14,000 students. These are Chromebooks that are accessible to our students in carts. There's another 203 Chrome boxes. Most of these are attached to the interactive whiteboards at Colonel Fred Sherry and Florence Bowser. Then we have 22,000, roughly, Windows laptops that are in carts that are also student-accessible, 4,395 Windows desktops. This number is shrinking. As we move forward, and Windows computers and Windows laptops are more expensive, we're putting more Chromebooks in place. You'll see this number, if we come back next year, probably down around 3,000. We have 709 projectors that are installed, 325 mobile cart projectors. These are in our classrooms, basically cover all. Our classrooms have a projector that are accessible. The staff, we provide to our teachers the option for them to check out a laptop or a Chromebook. Currently, we're encouraging to check out a Chromebook purely because of cost, and that is what our students are using.
Mr. Littlefill, before you go on, do you want to define a Chrome box for anyone?
Oh, certainly. So in front of you all, each of you have a Chromebook. Basically, a Chrome box is, shrink that down into a little box without a display, and we can hook it to a large display, a projector, or even a display like this. I'm going to talk a little bit about print management. We do outsource our printer service and support, but it falls under technology. A couple of years ago, we implemented a product called Paper Cut, and the reason for this was to give our schools the ability to manage printing, to enforce quotas on printers and copiers. And then this year, we started a process called Follow Me Printing. And what it enables us to do is you can print to the cloud, use your ID badge, and release a job on any of the Follow Me print devices. The advantage of this is we can cut costs. Often, print jobs are never picked up. Before we had this, the jobs would print, collect, go into the recycling box, and we lost funds there. With this, after eight hours of jobs sitting there and no one picking it up, it's deleted, and we move forward. The other piece of it, I note up here, we have 10 schools that have completely moved over to Follow Me Printing. Ms. Avery's school happens to be one of those, since she's here, I'll mention that. So what this has done is we have replaced classroom printers with copiers, not putting a copier in every classroom, but putting them in the pods where the teachers are. Instead of one copier in the office, now we have is, could be, depending on the building, four or five copiers in the building, eight or 10, depending on the size of the school. The advantage of that, and I'm going to throw out some numbers here, I ran some quick calculations. We save 70%, 76% on every single black page, black and white page, that we send to a copier-type device. And on a color page, we save 44%. We pay less than half a penny a page to print a black and white page, and about 7.5 cents a page to print a full-color page. Huge savings over time. Ms. Forsman, what's that?
It stays with the school. The money stays with the school.
Oh, Ms. Forsman's sharing that the schools that have converted are not having to pay for their print cost, that the central office is now paying for that cost for those schools that have converted. And we invested, it was a little over $300,000 this year in converting these schools. Another area you had a lot of questions was about security cameras and building security in general. So I wanted to sort of talk about that. We've replaced all the security systems at the high school and middle schools. The old antiquated VHS recording systems have been replaced. We've put in high-definition IP security systems in all the middle schools and high schools. This year, we have invested about $400,000 in the elementary schools where we're adding the cameras to all the entrances, so we have security cameras there. Over the last, actually since 2013, we've spent $975,000 on access control and security cameras. Part of that came from the state security grants, which we received about $300,000 to help implement this, and the rest was done through local funds. And you can see, we're adding 126 indoor cameras to the elementary schools. That's for the door, the entrance of the building. And then also the mobile units, we're adding cameras to the mobile units. We didn't have enough funds to do all the mobile units that we have in the division, but we addressed the highest-density areas with those. Network, there's a lot of numbers up here. I'm not going to review every one of these with you, but we do support, we have IP phones in every classroom, lots of Wi-Fi. So the wireless access points, we have one right there. Throughout the district, we cover, in our estimation, about 95% of the footprint of every building in the district for wireless access. With the close to 14,000 Chromebooks, which are all Wi-Fi, we need a very reliable wireless network. Another piece of trivia, the last item that we talked, we run about 3.5 to 4 terabytes of data every single day, and a terabyte's sort of hard to fathom. So I ran a quick calculation. 265 million pages is the equivalent of 1 terabyte. That's the amount of traffic that we run through our network on a daily basis. Another piece that I didn't put up here, we've been building a fiber infrastructure that connects all our schools. Part of this was through the INET agreement that the city had with Charter due to a franchise agreement, and part of it we built as we built new schools. We put in-the-ground fiber to Pioneer Elementary when we built Pioneer, and most recently, we put the 17 miles of fiber that goes from Nan's River to Florence Bowser to Colonel Fred Sherry. The advantage to having the fiber network that we have is we're not spending close to $100,000 a month on leasing connections to connect our buildings. To have the amount of bandwidth that Suffolk has, it would cost us just about $100,000 a month if we had to pay for that. Our recurring cost for this fiber is zero. The only cost we have is if there's a major cut on our fiber, and then we would be incurring that cost and then recouping it from the contractor or whoever cut the fiber. Charter actually currently, or Spectrum, currently maintains the fiber that we run on theirs, and we are not charged any monthly fees for that fiber. There were some questions last month about professional development, so I wanted to sort of give you an idea of what our ITRTs do. They handle the instructional technology, professional development. And this is just some information. We have, currently, we have two ITRTs that are doing it. Ms. Lafferty, last month, was moved into Mr. Johnson's position, and we're filling the vacancy of Ms. Lafferty with a third one. But these numbers are calculated based on the three ITRTs since the start of school, or July to current. And as you can see, we've done hundreds of hours of face-to-face training, professional development opportunities, one-on-one. And then at the bottom there, you see help desk tickets closed. That's the number of tickets that they actually addressed with phone calls coming into our help desk. Our goal is to have about 70% of the ITRTs' time in the classroom, and the rest of the time either preparing for that or addressing calls. Currently, we run about 45% of the time in the classroom, and the rest of the time's addressing the calls and other pieces. We are changing our structure, which the organization will show, that we're taking the ITRTs off the help desk and putting technicians on there. And we'll be treating it as a Level 1 help desk, redirecting the tickets to the appropriate people at the appropriate times, instead of having a highly-paid person answering the phone, "I forgot my password," and we get a lot of those calls. So that we sort of restructure to put more time into the classroom, working with the teachers. I will be sharing with you, after I'm finished, the Save the Date card. This past year, we didn't do the Seek Conference because of opening the two schools, but this fall, we will be doing Seek again, and its subject, topics will be all things Google. I'd highly encourage all of you to attend, but I'll share these with you after we finish. Our data team, I wanted to just give you an idea, there's two technicians, and Ms. Lafferty oversees that team. Then they prepare, right now, over 130 local reports. The state and federal reports are ongoing all throughout the year. These are data collections that we're required to prepare for the state as well as the federal government. There are some monthly reports you have in your board report, your attendance summaries, things like that. Those are prepared by that group. And we have three significant local annual reports. I think one Dr. Verde refers to as a superfile. It's helped on their promotion and retention and handling their students there. And they also handled all the student information security and the end-user support for our student information system. Our techs, the field techs that you saw on the chart earlier, the gentlemen, we don't outsource repairs of our equipment. Everything we have are repaired by our own personnel. And the reason for that is it's much more cost-effective, and we're not waiting for someone to come out to the building, pick up the equipment, take it back to their shop, repair it, and bring it back. So we're self-servicing for HP. We also are self-servicing for Cisco. HP gives us a little bit of reimbursement for warranty repairs, but the real goal was to reduce the wait time for repairs. If we were waiting on the vendor to come out, it could be two, three days in addition to the time we have now. We typically service about 3,000 repair tickets a year with the six technicians in all the buildings. They also handle our deployments. As you see, we deployed over 4,000 Chromebooks this year. I just shared with Mr. Skinner, we'll be deploying three more CTE carts to the middle schools next week. Those are prepped and ready to go. Open it up to any questions that you may have, in addition to what you had last month. I hope I addressed everything that you had, and welcome to answer anything else you may have.
Questions, concerns? Anyone?
I'll just say this to Mr. Littlefill and his staff. They do an amazing job with the number of staff members you see, the number of devices that we have, the number of teachers they support, as well as administration and students. So I thank you all for the job that you do on a regular basis.
I'd just like to say thank you personally to Mr. Littlefill. I think he's been in Suffolk Public Schools for about 20 years.
Yes, ma'am.
He's done an excellent job, and I know he has a lot of challenges every day.
Thank you, Mr. Waller.
But he maintains. Thank you so much, Mr. Littlefill.
That's right. We all thank you.
Yes.
The next item on the Superintendent's report is Benchmark Data Update for a second nine weeks. We're going to call to the podium Dr. Latoya Harrison, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, Dr. Brooks Byram, School Board members. And as Dr. Whitney just shared, I am going to provide a very brief update on our benchmark data for the second quarter. You have in front of you the second-quarter benchmark report, and I'm just going to provide an overview of some of the key findings. I did want to just also share, just as I did in the last board meeting, I wanted to provide just an overview of the purpose of our benchmark assessments prior to sharing some of the findings. So benchmarks in our school division are used as interim assessments to evaluate student mastery of skills that are primarily taught within a nine-week period. We do have some, many- We do have some, many cases where in each nine weeks, we also add additional items to benchmarks to ensure that test items or skills that were weak in the prior quarter are also added in, in the next quarter, so that students have another opportunity to work on those skills. So we use them to inform decisions at the classroom, school, and district level. Teachers use them to strengthen weak skill areas and to identify students in need of additional support. Our school leaders use them to determine if there are issues with pacing, or if there's a need for additional support with specific skills or strands. And then our division leaders, we use the data to also identify weak skill areas and to target our support to specific schools. The benchmark data, our tests are aligned to the SOLs, to the standards of learning, but they are not used as a predictor of SOL performance. So I did want to just highlight some of the findings, and you'll find them at the very beginning of the report, on the first page of the report. At the elementary level, we administered twenty different benchmark assessments. The assessments in history received the highest overall percent of students obtaining mastery at seventy-one percent, whereas the lowest percent of students mastering the elementary assessments was in the area of science at sixty-two percent. In the area of English, third-grade writing was the elementary assessment with the lowest mastery and pass rates at forty-seven and sixty-seven percent respectively. However, second-grade English had the highest pass rate with ninety-one percent of the students passing that assessment. For math, fourth-grade students were least likely to master the math benchmark at fifty-five percent, and the first-grade mathematics assessment had the highest math mastery rate at seventy-six percent. In science, the lowest mastery rate was in fourth grade at forty-two percent, and the highest mastery rate was in first grade at eighty-two percent. At the middle school level, there were fifteen different assessments administered. The highest overall mastery and pass rates occurred in science at fifty-two and seventy-four percent respectively. Middle-school math assessments were, had the lowest overall mastery rate compared to over, other content areas in middle school, and that was at forty-five percent. In English, the sixth-grade writing assessment had the lowest mastery and pass rates at thirty-four and fifty-four percent respectively. The Algebra I and Geometry math assessments had the highest mastery rate with roughly half, about fifty-five percent of students mastering those assessments, and the seventh-grade math assessment had the lowest mastery rate at twenty-nine percent. In science, the highest mastery rate was in Earth Science at sixty-nine percent, and the lowest was in eighth-grade science at twenty-one percent. At the high school level, we administered a total of twenty-two different benchmark assessments. The assessments completed in the area of English had the highest overall mastery and pass rates at fifty-five percent and seventy-nine percent respectively. The lowest mastery rate was in tenth-grade English at seventeen percent, and the pass rate was at fifty percent for tenth-grade English. The ninth and twelfth-grade honors assessments had the highest mastery rates of eighty-four and eighty-one percent of students mastering those assessments. The mastery rates for math ranged from, at the high school level, ranged from seven to seventy-four percent, and that was for Algebra I Part One, all the way up to honors Algebra II. In science, the mastery rates ranged from forty to fifty-two percent on all science assessments, and in history, the mastery rates ranged from thirty-three to forty-six percent on all history assessments at the high school level. So those are, and you have a lot more data there in front of you and findings for specific schools, but those were just the highlights at the, for each content area overall and for each content area by grade level. After each benchmark assessment, our team meets to analyze the data and to determine where supports are needed most. The supports that we provide include monthly coaches' meetings, and so in those coaches' meetings, and those, and this is primarily at the, at the elementary level where we provide support to our academic coaches who are in the buildings, and we meet with them, our team, instructional supervisors and specialists meet with them to develop lesson plans on all the weak skill areas, so they'll analyze the data, identify the weak skills, and develop targeted lesson plans that they can share with teachers to support them in their instruction around those particular skill areas. We also provide ongoing support on the weak skills in secondary-level citywide meetings. We are really working, in math in particular, to encourage the use of the math instructional plans and to support teachers in their use of those, as well as I mentioned in the last board meeting, the Desmos calculator tool that's very critical to math instruction, and it is, it is a tool that students will be using, not this year, it's not required this year for the SOLs, but it will be required in the future, and so we're really trying to prepare students, as well as teachers, for that, which is going to be happening in the very near future. We provide daily reading and writing warm-ups in the middle schools to prepare students for writing, the writing benchmarks and writing SOLs, and then provide that support to teachers. Math spiral reviews are provided in the elementary schools, as well as benchmark review and content notes. And then, of course, we provide targeted support to schools with the greatest need, and so that's where my team, the instructional supervisors and specialists, spend much of their time working with the schools that have the greatest need. And in addition to that, we have increased the number of Algebra readiness tutors to address some of the needs with algebra in particular, so every school this year has a separate Algebra readiness tutor that goes into classrooms to work specifically with those students who have been identified as needing additional support in that area. And I will turn it over to you for any questions. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Dr. Harrison, as you look at these scores, the elementary schools seem to do so much better on, on the benchmarks than the middle schools and the high schools. Is that because of the nature of the beast, or is that because the teachers are doing something different?
Typically, for the middle and high school level, of course, as students progress in their years in school, things become more and more rigorous, and particularly in history and science, at times, the amount of content, and math as well, the amount of content that teachers have to cover to meet the standards of learning by the end of the school year, it, it does become more and more demanding as the students progress through school. And so you do see that reflected in, in the data on these benchmarks, I, I think so.
Any other questions or comments?
I do. I, I don't have, I, I want to clarify something. As I look at these scores, when I think about high school and, and middle school, I'm looking at Algebra Part One, Algebra Part Two, there are smaller numbers of students taking the tests, so the percentage, the pass rate seems to be affected by that. If only ten students take the test, then if half of them feel it looks like it's lower or whatever than, than what it is in actuality. So I, I don't know if that's an explanation for some of it, but it seems to be consistent throughout this, as I look at the different courses. Geometry, I probably wouldn't have done well either on the benchmark, as I recall my geometry lessons years, years ago. But at any rate, I know that this represents like one-quarter of the year's testing period. Each nine weeks, you do a benchmark test, right?
That is correct.
So this is only one part of, one, one-fourth of a whole that we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. And the last item on the reports by the superintendent is calendar of special events. If you'll take a look at the memo sent to each of you regarding the special events, we have quite a bit going on during this month of March. This is Music in Our Schools Month, and as well as Youth Art Month, so we do have special activities going on throughout March. We also have Media Specialist Appreciation Day, April 10th, the Twenty-Eighth Annual Career Expo on April 11th, spring break, April 15th and 19th, and the superintendent's art show on April 23rd. That concludes the superintendent's report. Back to you, Ms. Chair.
Next order of business is the consent agenda, if you'll look at those items, and if there are any questions or whatever. This is an action item. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Next order of business is moving on to unfinished business. We have an update on the superintendent's proposed budget for 2019, 2012.
Yes, Mrs. Wendy Forsman, our Executive Director of Finance, will presenting that, will be presenting that update. Ms. Forsman?
Good evening. Tonight, we bring you some changes to the superintendent's proposed budget based on the General Assembly's approved budget that's now in the governor's hands. You can see here where the operating budget now is one-hundred-and-fifty-two million nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars, or two-point-seven-eight percent higher. That represents four-point-one million dollar increase instead of a four-point-six million dollar increase. The Grants Fund was an increase, and that's no change from last time, of three-hundred-thousand dollars, as well as food service increased three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars from last year, but those are also no changes to the budget. So what changed? You can see here, the compensation supplement changed slightly. The General Assembly decided to split their raise, it's a five percent over two years, but they put caps on each year, and they started the second year of the raise in September rather than July, which means they reduced the amount of money they were sending us. None of that is affecting our changes, but you just need to know that's why these numbers have changed. So you can see that basic aid and sales tax changed by three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, and these other items changed slightly. So the state increase in revenue now is three-point-one million dollars instead of three-point-six million dollars. This next slide will show you very clearly the governor's budget as proposed, the General Assembly's revenue at three-point-one million, so a difference for our state revenue of less by four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So that meant we had to go back to expenses and look and see where they would be changed. The second thing that the General Assembly did was reduce the number of guidance counselors they would provide to schools. They increased the ratios, and so instead of the net six that we had in the governor's budget, we ended up with a net one-point-five, and the change in that, in, in expense was down by three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand one-hundred-and-forty dollars. We looked at the disaster recovery plan and the equipment that we could purchase right away, and things that we could maybe put off, to try to see if there were some things that we could do to that, to bring that down a little bit, and we found that we could hold off on forty-nine thousand dollars of that expense, because this other equipment needs to be put in first, so we, we feel like we can do that. We also revisited the Excel instructional program, and we revised that. The change is, the original plan was for four teachers. The new plan is two teachers and two teacher assistants, so that dropped the expense by a hundred-and-four thousand and forty dollars. And so the grand total of those changes, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-eighty equals the amount of money that we are now not getting from the state. In addition, there was some, quite a bit of discussion today on, on the media and everything about our raises and how they would work, so we wanted to provide you a couple of examples of how the raise would work, so that it would help everyone understand. You can see here, this is a teacher salary increase. If the teacher is on step seventeen, their base salary is fifty-five thousand forty-four dollars. This particular example has a master supplement of two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-four for a total salary of fifty-nine, fifty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight. Next year, that teacher would step to step eighteen. The base salary would change by two-point-two-five percent, as presented. We would add the master supplement, and the teacher would earn fifty-nine thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars next year. Next example is an example of the support staff. This person is on grade eleven, step seventeen. I'll remind you, there are eighteen steps on the scale, so this person is on seventeen. Current step seventeen on this grade is thirty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. The next step on this grade, step eighteen, is thirty-two thousand five fifty-four this year. Now remember, we're adjusting the scale by a cost of living, so when we do that, we're going to add to step eighteen a hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, and next year, this person would go on step eighteen at thirty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-seven, which is the total of the thirty-two five fifty-four and one sixty-two seventy-four, for a total of a three percent raise.
Any questions, comments?
I'm concerned that we're riddling the Excel program down from where it started to now we've got two teachers and two teacher aides. Are we going to be able to successfully implement a program with that little bit of support, or should we be holding off till we can fund it with more support than what we're going to be providing?
That's a really good question, and we've had much conversation about that very, that very, that very thing. But the idea would be, with us serving sixty, I believe, students, sixty students, correct? Thirty, thirty students, it will serve as a pilot program this year to allow us to work out any kinks, and then hopefully expand it. I think it's going to be important that we convey early on our idea of expanding it so that we can prepare the budget accordingly. I would agree, you know, we started off talking about it being at separate school or facility, if you will, and then, of course, we narrowed it down to, that's where we initially said, sixty students to start, and now we're down to thirty. The choice behind that, or the decision was made basically not wanting to decrease the salary increase that was being proposed, specifically when we saw that we weren't getting the roughly five-hundred thousand from the state that we were anticipating with my initial proposal. But I, but I do understand your concern. That is a concern of mine as well. In order to implement it with fidelity, we want to do it with the resources that are needed, and so as opposed to trying to expand it that first year, we said we'll narrow it down and make certain that we're able to provide the resources that it, that are needed in order for it to be successful.
Will it be housed in one building now?
Yes.
Just one building?
Yes, one building.
One classroom, one building?
Perhaps two classrooms, and the teachers will do some teaming, maybe have two TAs or one TA going back and forth, because we wanted to pair them with one teacher focusing on reading and the other one math, and integrating the other content areas, so there'll be some team teaching along with that as well, and flexible grouping, of course.
Any other questions?
No, I have a comment. I'm glad that we're going to do a trial, since there were questions about the program in the first place, so sometimes things work out the way they work out, so it'll give us a chance to see how it works, and again, to work out the kinks that you mentioned. If there are any issues in it, that'll give us an opportunity. I'm sorry, of course, like everyone else, that the state didn't come through with the funds, but I'm glad we did not have to remove teacher sal, we didn't have to affect employee salaries with this, so there were ways we could work it out.
Madam Chair, I have a question. What, what, what is the cost? The gentleman who gave the presentation about the CIS program, if I'm correct, did he say it was ten thousand, or we moved up to fifteen thousand for them to serve sixty-nine students at EFE?
Right. They have, when they say sixty-five students, that's the number of students that they have targeted. They provide services to more than the sixty-five, actually, because they, they won't turn any student away. But yes, as far as on their actual targeted list, they receive, or they have sixty-five students to serve, and yes, it is fifteen thousand that we now donate to them.
Okay, so with their results that they're getting, ninety-four percent promotion rate and ninety-three percent in behavior, I mean, looking at it, I think that would, that program would be more beneficial with the finances that we have here. Because you got, got me through this.
I, I don't think it's a one or the other, because I think they have different purposes, if you will. One is looking at more wraparound services, and when we talk about the Excel Academy, we're really looking at students who are not performing to their potential or below-grade level. The, the Excel Academy is a... The, the Excel Academy is a major focus on academics. And while communities and schools are focusing on academics, they primarily are eliminating some of the barriers that prevent students from being able to perform or excel. So I see the programs as, as different, but I certainly see the benefit of the communities and schools program. We've had much discussion about attempting to expand that program because of the success. In fact, we've had a conversation about expanding it to the middle school where those students are going to because they're used to the type of program and the services that they provide, which would primarily be Kings Fork Middle School. But we've just not been able to do that based on the funding that it would require for communities and schools as well as ourselves.
Any other concerns, questions? Anything else of Ms. Forsman? Thank you, Ms. Forsman, for that report. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 18/19-19, which is an action item. And that's included with the adoptions of the norms and protocols, excuse me, which we discussed earlier in our work session. And would we like to review any of that at this time, or are there any other concerns?
I think we-
And changes?
We made the changes, and if you look on your Chromebook, you'll find the changed document. Fortunately, Mrs. Chavis was right on it, so everyone should have the changed documents to what we decided during the work session. So if you are ready, we can vote.
Any questions? This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the norms and protocols as presented with the changes that we made today, I guess.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next item is Ordinance 18/19-68. This is an action item, and it's the second reading of this. Move to approve.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next item is Ordinance 18/19-58. This is the first reading. This is an informational item. Are there any questions or concerns? I think we've received from Mr. Waller and the Policy Committee previous information on this. Are there any concerns? This is first reading, and it's an informational item. Move on to new business. I think first item is to schedule a joint meeting of the school board and the city council for 4:00, 4:00 PM, March 20th. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we have the meeting after, oh, well, the, the meeting is recommended for March 20th at 4:00 PM. I move to approve.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion is carried, 5 to 1.
Next item is a special school board meeting to approve our financial plan for 2019, 2020. I think possibility, the date was March 20th, directly after the city council joint meeting. If people will check your calendar. I believe Dr. Whitney will give us the time or the location.
Location can be determined, but we're also able to have it as late as you'd like for it to be as well.
The issue I'm having personally with the whole March 20th at 4:00 and beyond, my work schedule, I'm coming an hour away to get here. So I'm not going to be able to be a part of the joint meeting, and I don't know what time I'll be able to get here. I'll be coming from Capren, Virginia, and it's contingent upon the Department of Corrections if they're going to release me early or not.
I have a committee meeting that evening on the 20th at 6:30, the Special Ed Advisory Committee.
So we'll keep it March 20th? Or do we want the other dates?
But I think this meet, the first one is the school, is the one with the city. We, I don't know that we have the option to change that because they have a city council meeting after that. So that was, that was our invitation. The budget meeting is the one that I guess we're wondering what we can do with that. Well, we had asked, I know that I had asked about voting if we were not there. The, the meeting would say council is an informational meeting, pretty much we're not making, we're not making any determinations there. But the budget meeting this afterwards, if we have to, if we decided on a budget meeting, say about 7:00, we'd at least have one person we know would be missing from that meeting. Can they use a proxy in that, in that situation? Can we do that? I know you had sent out some information when that could be used.
There is no provision in state law for you to vote by proxy. The only thing you could do is evote or participate in the meeting electronically at a remote location. And there are certain guidelines that must be met in order to participate in the meeting electronically at a remote.
April 1st, we have to have it.
Yeah, we have to have it by April 1st, and there are conflicts, I think, with many mumbles. Some people are going to be out of town, and so we have a conflict, I think. Any suggestions, Dr. Whitney?
I'm looking to the next week.
Thursday, the 28th? For finance, the 28th.
I know.
The look, if you all could see the look on her face when I said the 28th. Maybe we better stay away from it.
Could we move it up? Could we have it on Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 26th?
No, before that, Tuesday, the 19th.
The 19th. We could have it the 19th, if that's what the board would like, yes.
I'm doing an electronic.
Second the date, but any time that you all suggest.
If we do it at 7:00, that would give, would that give you time to give that?
That would give me ample time to be here.
19th, is it looking okay? March 19th at 7:00, is that what we're saying? Can you let us know the location? All right, that's an action item.
I move that we schedule the meeting for March 19th at 7:00 PM, and the, the location will be determined.
Second.
Atkins, was that you that seconded that? Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next item is Resolution 18/19-20. This is an action item concerning conditions for an agreement between the city, school board, and Compo Construction Company. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 18/19-20.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Next, we have the policy subcommittee report and recommendations. Dr. Buck?
Okay, where are my papers? Put it up on the internet.
Policy committee, subcommittee or committee, whatever we want to, want to call ourselves, met. That was Mrs. Story and I and Mr. Waller, thank you. And there are some things we want to consider. As you may recall, I think at our first meeting, we talked about our committees, committees appoint, committee appointments, and who should decide, our standing committees, our other committees that we serve on, who should appoint committee members, and also who should be a part of the committees. Our, the first, after three meetings or four, after three meetings, we have determined, made some determinations, and I'm going to read this so I won't forget to do something, okay? The policy subcommittee met on the seventh floor conference room of the school board, school administrative offices on the following dates, January 9th, February 7th, February 20th, and March 11th. The first order of business was to review standing committees of the school board. The committee considered names and descriptions of our current school board standing committees and discussed whether there's a need for additional standing committee. At its initial meeting, the committee also reviewed policies adopted by surrounding school divisions regarding committees and committee assignments. Specifically, the committee considered school board policies of Virginia Beach, Newport News Hampton, at a subs, at a, and Hampton. At a subsequent committee meeting, the committee discussed policies and/or practices adopted by other school divisions, and they were Rockingham, Spotsylvania, Stafford, Williamsburg, York, Albemarle, Alexandria, Chesapeake, Barquah, Fredericksburg, Hanover, Alef White, Montgomery County, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Roanoke. The committee recommends the, the following. The first is that the policy subcommittee be renamed the Policy Review Committee. I think you all have this document, so please look at it as we go through it so you'll know what we're recommending. Number two, the policy subcommittee recommends that there be two pupil personnel committees, and each committee will decide their desired meeting date and time. The policy subcommittee is of the opinion that two pupil personnel committees will facilitate greater participation by school board members. In effect, what we did was look at the fact that one committee has to meet every Thursday if need be. And for the committee members, since some of us are retired, some of us are working, it's difficult for everybody to come. Now, what we have done in the past is alternate, and I think we've done that pretty well. But if we had two, three member committees, and we're big enough to do that, we have enough members to do that, we could look at times, different times for the meetings, or we could look at a rotating basis, whichever was appropriate. Some examples might be one committee could work in the afternoon, could be in the afternoon, one committee could meet in the morning, one committee could work it in the evening if that could be worked out. We discussed the pros and cons, but that's the second thing to consider if you think two groups would be good. And then the third thing is we recommended, the policy subcommittee recommends approval of all the committees attached to this report, and we've given you descriptions, I'll go over any of them that you have questions about, which includes the addition of a legislative committee as a standing committee of the school board. The name and descriptions of each committee is included as part of this report. So if you'll take a moment and look at your second sheet, which gives you an idea of what the committees are, and if you have questions. If you want to take a moment to read them.
Dr. Brooks-Buck, was Student Services contacted in reference to the change that you're suggesting for pupil personnel committee?
No, no, no. It was just, these are just ideas. We're not wedded to any of them. These were things we discussed, so whatever your opinion is, we want to hear it. And we thought we'd bring it to the full board for discussion to see what you thought was a good idea. So please share with me what your thoughts are.
Whatever is happening in the schools and through pupil personnel, you know, like today, we didn't meet, you know, we, we haven't been meeting as regularly as we have in the past. We seem to have rotating people coming in on the committee. So having four substitutes for the three members seems to be working. I, I just would hate, I don't want to put an extra burden on, on the pupil personnel department.
I concur with Mr. Mitnick. When we've needed alternates, we've worked it out. And, and again, that probably would put a burden, a kink in how the pupil personnel department does its business. And so I have concerns about the, the two committees as well.
Any else have questions about that or any, any of the other?
Dr. Brooks-Buck, the legislative committee, I'm confused. You know, the Virginia School Board Association is our, is our advocacy body, and we have opportunities to submit as a school board legislative items to the Virginia School Board Association, who then does the lobbying for us. I question whether or why we need a legislative committee.
This was an idea that we had, and had I given my report, I guess, last week, or, or it would speak more to looking at things that particularly affect Suffolk Public Schools directly or indirectly. But we talked about following this legislation and explaining to board members what it means to us. Let me just give you an example. As a part of advocacy for Suffolk Public Schools, and I posed this question to one of our legislators who had a meet and greet here, we spent, not last year, year before last, maybe year before last school year, $24 million for special education and its services, which is fine because we provided what students needed. However, the government was supposed to and has been supposed, supposing to for years, given us, they're supposed to give us 40% of that in reimbursement according to the law. We've been getting 17% of that. So as we advocate to our legislators, and as I have been advocating to, I met with Senator Kane and Senator Warner and a representative for us, Bobby Scott, Congressman Bobby Scott, to indicate, to give them this information because it was important to me that they understand that if we had gotten the 40%, it would be $5.6 million or so of what, of more money for us to operate the school system. dollars or so of what, of more money for us to operate the school system. And so knowing that, and it didn't necessarily come from uh, from the training that we get and the pot topics and so on and so forth that we get, but being able to directly advocate for us as a school system and follow that law, and that's because of my interest in policy and, and, and school law, what uh, it helped us to know what to advocate for, what to ask for, what to speak to them about. And I think after, after complaining about it, years of complaining about it, by the way, uh, there are some people who are beginning to listen. I know that Congressman Scott, who is now, uh, because things have changed, and, and he is now Chair of the Education Labor Subcommittee for, for the House of Representative, the House of Representatives, is pushing forward an initiative to give us some reimbursement for that. We won't get all of it at one time, but he's pushing forward with it. So just that kind of thing, and how it impacts Suffolk and the funding we get and the reimbursements we get makes a difference, and if we follow those things, it won't harm us. I'd like to ask Mr. Waller if you would, if you have anything else you'd like to add with regard to this.
In that I set in on the discussions by both Vice Chair, um, Dr. Brooks-Buck and Board Member Story, um, I think that there would be a benefit to the local school board to have a legislative committee, and thi, and this is the reason. When bills are pending before the General Assembly that affects public education and has a direct impact on Suffolk, it never hurts, there's no harm at all in having additional voices being in support of legislation. Yes, it is true that the Virginia School Board Association has their own arm that does that, um, but it will not hurt at all to have another voice also supporting legislation that is pending before the General Assembly. The other thing is that even though you are part of the V S B A, there may be times where they may take a position on a piece of legislation that you may not necessarily agree with. And so this will afford you an opportunity to have your own voice on legislation pending before the General Assembly. For an example, uh, Virginia Beach, I believe they have their own legislative arm, their own legislative committee that advocates on behalf of Virginia Beach Schools for bills pending before the General Assembly that they may be in favor of. So again, I don't think having an extra voice will harm you at all. In fact, it may be of some benefit to you.
I, I think too, I wanted to say in that same regard, when we, when we uh talk about some of the laws that we have, and, and when we think in terms of uh special education, when you were saying that having our own, looking at Suffolk's concerns, one of the national initiatives, which is also a Virginia initiative, is for people to reexamine and update um the idea, the, the special ed law that governs uh what we do in schools. And what Senator Warner, Senator, Senator Kane, and Representative Scott's, Congressman Scott's office indicated was that that's not necessarily because of the tenure of the time and the composition of Congress right now, it may not be in the best interest to look at that, because you have, you have uh people that you have that are in office, the Secretary of Education, and some others who may not understand what's going on. And so to look at changes under that banner may mean that we're moving backwards instead of forwards. In other words, that law is, is what we in policy call tightly coupled. It's, it's, if this happens, if a child disident, you have a certain number of days, you have a certain group responsible, and so on and so forth. If we look at that law right now with the current, current political climate, we might find that we'll lose the gains that we made in nineteen seventy-five, and then in two thousand four, when the laws were updated, seventy-five, ninety, and, and two thousand four. So we're looking at, and we're thinking about what's best in Suffolk Public Schools, and we don't want any of our children to lose the benefits they already have under federal law. So that's, those are some of the reasons that we look at this. And again, that wouldn't help Suffolk for them to do that right now, and that wouldn't help Suffolk's children. So when I go and advocate for that, or even at the General Assembly, I try to stay, and I know you've done it with me along with Dr. Dubrinsky, try to stay and talk to our folks. Our, our uh representative from here uh is in charge of a lot of funding that we get from right here in Suffolk. So having talks with our legislators from right here, who know about what our specific needs are, can make a difference in the kinds of things that we get for the children in Suffolk Public Schools. And that's why I supp, I really support the idea of having this. And that's just an opinion. Again, we wanted to talk to the full board, so if we can, we can, when we decide to take action on this, if we wanna delete the proposal to have two committees for pupil, uh, the Pupil Personnel Committee, we don't have to do that, but we can alter this in whatever way we want before we vote. And that's why we, as a Subcommittee, brought it back to the full board to see what you guys think about.
I just recommend you keep the Legislative Committee. It's needed, it's necessary.
I like the Legislative Committee as well. I think it would, would be beneficial to us to have our own voice.
So.
I would, I would also like to make sure that we are submitting whatever legislative proposals we have through, to the V S P A, so that we have their, so that they go before the Legislative Assembly in, at the November conference and can be added to the state legislative package. If they don't know what our concerns are, yeah, with the special ed, you know, needs, then um, you know, they may not, and I'm not sure if it's in the legislative package.
Let me, let me tell you how it works. When I go with, with any group, we had, I'm giving my report now, okay? I was gonna give it at the end, but I'm giving it to you now. When I go, uh, when I met with the senators, I did not do it by myself or on my own, there were twenty-two representatives from sixteen school boards in Virginia. The National School Boards Association actually arranged a meeting at the Advocacy Conference. I mentioned at the last board meeting how to advocate for a position we want, what approaches to take, and so on and so forth. That was a part of that training. So they take us, as you know, when we meet in Richmond and we go to uh the General Assembly, it's because they've arranged those legislative days for us to walk around and talk to each of our representatives about what our concerns are in the community, based on, they give us talking points, and we can modify those talking points to best fit what's good for Suffolk and what's good for them, and that's why I shared that with you, but that's, that's what we do. And so we continue to do that and be a voice, and of course, you have to do it respectfully, you have to do it. It's good if you go with a group of people who are like-minded, who share their same concerns, but each division that was represented, all sixteen of us, got to talk about those issues that are concerns for us as a school system, but with uh the representatives from Virginia actually taking us to those meetings, going from place to place and arranging those meetings for us. So it's never done outside the bounds of V S B A or N S B A.
Other comments? So uh, as I'm listening, uh, we're continuing with the uh Policy Committee, and it's gonna be called the Policy Review Committee, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the suggestion. The Pupil Personnel Committee will remain as one body with alternates, correct? And we will continue with the idea of a Legislative Committee.
Those are the only changes, the other committees are already there. So we have five standing committees, the Policy Review Committee, Pupil Personnel, the City Council Liaison Committee, Finance Committee, and a Legislative Committee. And again, the only change in what's before you is the designation of two separate groups for Pu, Pupil Personnel will remain the same with alternates.
Any other concerns or questions? That's an action item.
I'd like to move that the amended Policy Subcommittee Report be adopted.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Uh, next, we have public speakers on non-agenda topics. Sally Adams. Sally Adams. And moving on, we have business by board members. Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank everyone who came up and spoke and gave us some valuable, valuable information. And I also want to talk about, um, thank the parents uh that called me about a concern in my district, in my borough in Lake Kennedy, where in the month of February, um, for a week, there was a bus problem, that the bus came extremely late in the morning and in the afternoon, and I immediately gave this issue to our superintendent, who acted immediately on the situation and brought back um valuable information that during this time, um, there was a robo-call in the morning and in the afternoon to all the parents with the numbers that they had on file. Also, there was a Suffolk School Board car transportation that went in the neighborhood to make sure that the kids were safe in the neighborhood. Um, and I just wanna thank you publicly for taking care of that. And it also allows us to see where we can make some more changes to make sure things like this does not happen, um, and to, you know, maybe, 'cause some of the parents was concerned about their kids being marked tardy, or some of them didn't even get to school because they went back in the house, 'cause parents leave sometime before the buses come. So um, maybe we can look into making sure if something like this happens, that our students are not marked tardy, um, and if it's because of a school bus issue that they're not even marked absent, if they have no way of knowing the bus is gonna come a hour or so late. So that's something that we can look into. Also, um, I want to um say it was great last month when I went to the Nansson River High School, and they had their African-American program, where they had a host of students displaying talent, where it was singing, or um, they did spoken word, and one of the assistant principals, Mr. Mitchell, said that he had no idea the students that he walked past every day had so much talent. So that was, that was a great experience. And last week, um, the opportunity to read at Mac Bin School, um, that was a great opportunity, and also have my daughter, my oldest daughter, um, she was there representing the partnership with East End Baptist Churches, who also read, and she's real small, so it was funny that one of the administrators was so amazed that my daughter knew the big words in the book, and I was like, she's thirty-two years old. That was, it was just so funny when she said that, but just to have the opportunity to actually be with the students, um, you know, especially the little ones who, who just admire you or love you for you reading a simple book to them, you know, just spending time with them, taking selfies and, and hugging them, it was, it, you know, it was really, really nice. And um, I just, again, uh, we're here to serve our students, our teachers, administrators, be there for the parents, and you know, that's what we were elected for, and I say every meeting, hold us accountable for doing that. We get a slew of emails, you know, with concerns, and we can't get to everyone right then on the spot, but um, just give us a, give us time, and you know, we'll direct it to the correct person that needs to handle that. And emails, you know, that we get asking, why do we vote for this, or why do we vote for that? Um, we're evaluating what the information that we get, and we try to vote for the best interests of our students, of our, you know, of Suffolk Public Schools. And so, you know, we don't have any strings attached, I know I don't have any strings attached to me that someone can sway me to vote this way or vote that way. That's, that's not who I am, that's not who I will ever be. So I vote for the best interest of the Suffolk Public Schools, and I have all of you all who work for Suffolk Public Schools' best interest in mind. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mitnick?
First, I'd like to thank Ms. Walls from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for coming this evening. Fortunately, we didn't have any questions for you, but I appreciate your presence. And um, that's all.
Ms. Mayo?
I would like to also thank Dr. Whitney, the uh staff at our school administrative offices for the wonderful job that they're doing, and also our administrative staffs at our schools, our principals, teachers, all who work with our students daily to make Suffolk Public Schools one of excellence. I also visited some of the schools during the month of February, quite busy, and I served as a guest reader also at Mac Bin, also at Northern Shores, and also at Creekside. So I had an opportunity to visit some other schools as well, and I saw wonderful instruction, good student engagement, use of technology. I could go on with what I've had an opportunity to observe going on in our schools, and I want to commend you for the job that you're doing. And also thank everyone for what you do for our students of, in Suffolk Public Schools.
Ms. Mayo?
Mr. Ritty?
I'm gonna be short and brief. First and foremost, I wanna thank all the essential personnel, those who are responsible for getting our students to and from school, those who are responsible for making sure our schools' facilities are kept, those who instruct our students, and those who oversee the day-to-day operation. We would not be able to do what we do without you, and we are eternally grateful. And with that in mind, we are gonna move forward in a harmonious fashion, but what we ask of you is to be as um understanding as possible, when we know it's the budget seizing, and it's, it, it's a lot. You have funds, but the funds do not come with um, uh, do not come with no guidelines. A lot of our funding is already appropriated, and I just wanted to take that time and share it just like Ms. Jenkins. My emails are being flooded, my phone line has been flooded with messages regarding budget, and we wanna see that everyone receives a fair share, and that everyone knows that you're valued not only with words, but also with action. But it's gonna take some time, and when we are dependent, we, we're not a self-funding body. So because we're not, we have to really lobby um and make sure we have the support of those who do handle our funding, that we get the resources that we need so we can filter them back down to you. But I also want to say, um, last month, I had an opportunity to attend a Suffolk Education Foundation, Foundation uh meeting, and it was a very interesting meeting, and I found out a different array of services and things that are available to our students here in the city of Suffolk, and it's, it's a great time to be in Suffolk. We are moving forward, but it's a process. So I said you continue to be patient with the process and continue to um work alongside us. Thank you.
I want to um clarify one thing. My, my husband and I were looking at the paper, and we read an article about a million dollars that we gave back, and I wanted you to have the chance uh to tell us, one, where the million dollars came from, and two, what we decided to do with it, because I know there's some confusion from what I read.
Well, as, as each of you know, we were allocated money to build the two schools, the Fred Cherry and Florence Bowser. Um, and throughout the times that we're building, selecting contractors, selecting materials, supplies, and, and so forth, we do it as, as, as cost-effective as possible. So it did turn out that we had um remaining funds, um, that was one million dollars, at least, one million dollars that we could, that we in turn would have to give back to the city because we didn't use it. But we purposely made certain that we were, were um good stewards of, of the money, and we also realized that the need was there at the new Mount Zion Operations Center. That bid came in higher than what we had anticipated, and ironically, it was about a million dollars higher. And so the request that we had to the, to the City Council was to transfer that money to the project. transfer that money to the project of the Mount Zion Operations Center, and that's exactly what they did.
Thank you. I wanted that to be clear and to be understood, 'cause sometimes words are confusing, sometimes. I wanted to say this, I had a wonderful time this month just visiting schools, and we were all invited to various schools to read and to do some other things. So I got to go to Creekside, and I read to Early Start and Kindergarten, I had a wonderful time with them. The school was, everybody there was very positive. We got to walk through the school, it was decorated beautifully, and I, I wanna call her Ms. Moore, 'cause I've known her for that, for so many years, but Mrs. Outland took us through there, we just had a great time there. And then I went to Northern Shores. Of course, Northern Shores has been a place that I've been in and out of for years, and I believe that your perception of something may be, may differ from other people's perception. When I went to perceptions, when I went into the school to see what was going on there and to read, I read to Early Start, and I read to the first grade. And I wanna say this, and I'm not just saying this because Northern Shores is in my borough. I'm saying this because excellence has been a part of what they do since I've been a part of Suffolk Public Schools. I did have a child there for three years, who had a wonderful time, and instruction was great. They need the extra space, there is no question. However, instruction has not suffered because they did not have it. When I read the first grade, I was just so amazed, because as I started to read, they started to read to me. And so we all read the book out loud. First graders all participated, they understood what was going on, and they read the words beautifully. So I was very impressed with what I saw there. And I wanna thank the teachers and the staff, because they did a great job. I had signed up to read to Early Start, but somehow, when I got there, somebody wanted to take me out to fifth grade. And, fifth grade, of course, is in portables, and I went out to fifth grade to apologize to the teacher, because there was some misunderstanding about where I was supposed to be. At any rate, when I got to the fifth grade and went into the portable, I saw that the teacher had done a marvelous job with the portable, fixing it up and so on and so forth. It actually had two doors, one with the ramp for children with disabilities, and the other with stairs. But it was a wonderful learning atmosphere for what it was. I've been a teacher in a portable unit before, so I know that there's a difference, and we still have a need. The other thing was that the children were looking at a Dr. Seuss film, which was appropriate for what they were doing. At, at the time, it was the end of the day, and they really didn't wanna stop to hear me read. They weren't quite expecting me, so there was some confusion there. But at any rate, I had a great time at Northern Shores. I had a wonderful time with the children, as always, and in the school, as always. I also visited Forest Glen Middle School. I had lunch with the cafeteria staff, because we were in between classes, and engaged with the custodians who were there cleaning up, they were doing a wonderful job, both were. The counselor escorted me through the school, as the principal had some things that middle school principals have to go through every day, I used to be one, so I know. Had a wonderful conversation with two eighth-grade teachers, who were Mrs. Glover in an inclusion setting, and they were talking about how wonderful, how wonderfully well they were co-teaching together. So I had a great conversation there with those folks. And I got a chance to visit Oakland Elementary School, where I read the kindergarten. And we had a good time in that class, I had a wonderful time with the children, and I wanna give a shout-out at Oakland to the custodians who are there. The floors were enough to see your face, and they did a marvelous job. As I was walking through that school, there was one piece of paper on the floor, and as Mrs. Stadney, the principal, and I walked through the school, she picked up the piece of paper and put it in the trash can. They did a great job. And so I've had a wonderful time with schools, and I won't, I won't hold you anymore, but I think that that's what it's all about, and I really wanna give a shout-out to the staff, the principals, the teachers, the custodians, and the folks who feed our children, the bus drivers who get them there safely and get them home, and all of you who support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. As you can hear, we all went to a lot of events in February. They were excellent, we all attended throughout the city. You know, we have four hundred and thirty square miles, so we put a lot of miles on our vehicles, Dr. Whitney. But I think we saw firsthand some of the wonderful things and the positive things that are going on in our school system. And it, it all goes back to our staff, our administrators, our teachers, and our wonderful students. And I thank everyone for providing us with all those events to attend. I think especially the new board members expressed that they learned quite a lot, you know, about some different programs, excuse me, and different events that are occurring every day. And I think it gave us all a, a new glimpse of our school, and I thank them for that. I read at Northern Shores Elementary School, and I was in a kindergarten class, and as soon as I went in, one of the students said I was her grandmother, and all the children flocked to me and wanted to know if I'd brought candy and treats. But I, I, I played along with the little girl, and she said, you are really my grandmother, right? I said, today I am your grandmother, and I'm proud to be. So I took her up with me, and she sat at the front of the kindergarten class, we had a wonderful time. And then I attended a fifth-grade class, Ms. Watson's class, and that was most enjoyable, and I will tell Dr. Whitney that they were all engaged on their Chromebooks. And so I got some lessons on Chromebook and advice on Chromebook from the fifth graders, so that was very interesting as well. And Northern Shores is phenomenal, that's all I can say. I thank you, Ms. Connor, for the part you play in that, it goes back a long ways. But anyway, most enjoyable. Another event that some of us attended was the Suffolk Education Gala, which was at the Hilton, I think this was the fifth year that that had been on, and it was spectacular. I have to joke, Mr. Riddick, 'cause I like humor. Mr. Riddick ate all the desserts at our table. And, you know, he's young, and he can afford to do that, but we'll joke him on that for a long time. We build a lot of friendships and a lot of comedy as we go along, right, Mr. Riddick? But I won't let you forget that, okay? I wanna commend the students that performed at the gala, Oakland. I particularly liked the ukuleles. I'm not a musician, but Ms. Mayo there was giving me critiques as we went along. I especially liked the ukuleles, and I know the Suffolk Education Foundation got those, I think, as a grant, you know, to Oakland, and I think they were put to good use that night. John Yates performed, John F. Kennedy, Kings Fork Middle, Kings Fork High School, Lakeland, and Nance Monroe River. They were all excellent, and a lot of the performances were out of the box, what I call out of the box, would you all agree? Yep. And, you know, I commend those directors and, and those people who work diligently every day, the enthusiasm and the dedication of those directors and those students, you know. That was worth, you can't, you can't express what it was worth. But anyway, I wanna thank all of those who worked on that. Also, the school personnel, which I saw running around that night, that helped with that, I commend them for doing that. And, you know, ditto to everything everyone said. One final thing, yesterday, Dr. Buck and Dr. Whitney and myself met with the city. We met with the mayor, vice mayor, and the city manager. We had a very productive meeting again. We look forward to meeting with them next week on the twentieth. And, you know, I think that we have made great strides with the city over the last few years. I see them devoting more attention to education and really joining us in many of the things that we want to see accomplished as we move forward. So I thank you for that. Anyone else have anything to add that we left out? I think we gave a good report. A thorough report. Next item, we need to look at informational items, if there are any comments on those.
Yes.
Comments?
Under the information item for our surplus vehicles for auction, I requested about a workhorse for Kings Fork High School, and I see it listed at item number five thousand three hundred twenty-three. Workhorse to be assigned to Kings Fork High School Marching Band. It would cut down on the cost, this is Suffolk's largest band. And when they have to travel to engagements, they have to put a lot of instruments on buses, which damage instruments when you're going up and down the road, which adds on another cost, 'cause you have to replace it, it also become a safety barrier. Here's a workhorse that we have that's not in bad condition that we possibly could assign to Kings Fork High School Athletic Association. I wouldn't, me personally, I wouldn't recommend that we take the workhorse out of fleet. I recommend that that vehicle be assigned to Kings Fork High School Athletic Band for that purpose of transporting instruments.
We could certainly consider that, and I say that because I know that the principal, Dr. Lee, and the band director, they're looking at other alternatives. And one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that the, the, the truck that you're referencing would need to have some modifications to it to secure the actual the equipment, as are the instruments as it's being transported. What I'd like to do, or I would suggest, is that we allow them to continue to look at their alternatives. I don't know, Dr. Bird, if you have specifics as to what alternatives they're considering at this time, or not?
Nothing specific right now. I know that one of the ideas was more of a trailer that could be attached to a truck and be pulled along, that was one of the things they were looking at. There were some concerns with a county vehicle, who could, who could drive the vehicle, liability issues, so things like that. So that was one of the things they were exploring. Pull behind trailer.
So my recommendation would be that we remove this vehicle from the auction until we have a feasible solution. If this would not cost us anything to acquire a new vehicle, and we already have it in our inventory now, we could set it aside, give them a timeframe, and in a worst-case comes scenario, put it on the next auction. Or we could just make the minimal modifications with the center that we have at the Pruden. They can make the changes as a grade project, and the band could possibly use it. This idea was recommended by Virginia State University at Kings Fork High School Band Scholarship Day. I asked them a question on what ways do you, what methods do you use to keep costs down far as replacing their instruments? And one thing he stated was, we do not put our instruments on the bus like we in the, in the school sector do it. And I understand why we do it, but here's an opportunity that's not gonna cost us a lot of funds to alleviate that for one school.
Just keep in mind that if it's on the surplus list, it's because we see that it doesn't have much use, and it's not in the best condition. And if we're talking about transporting, transporting equipment, or not necessarily equipment, but instruments from different schools and locations, I'd be hesitant to use that van for that. If we're taking it off of the line, it's a reason. And I don't know if Mr. Baldwin's here to speak to that, or Mr. Napier, I'm not sure which fleet it's in, as far as the condition of that.
It's the reason.
That, that was what I was gonna ask. If it's, if it's being taken offline, is it in good repair?
No.
And that's what I was asking, because we wouldn't want the band to get somewhere, and the instruments to be somewhere else, but on the side of the road somewhere.
I think Mr. Napier's.
What's the actual reason?
As far as the conditions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I understand Mr. Riddick's concern. We got rid of this van, 'cause we couldn't keep it running.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you wanna do anything with it. Mr. Baldwin has told me we can't get parts. It's not a good option.
Thank you, that information wasn't provided to me, that's why.
For general information, if it's on the surplus list, it's because we see that it's not safe, it's not workable, or we can't make the repairs. Just as with many of the school buses that we put out there. And we caution people, many folks have asked to purchase or have them, but again, we, we hold no, we will not be liable, because we let them know that they're not in the best condition.
Fully understand, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Personnel report, Dr. Buck?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
The pupil personnel report, Dr. Buck?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the pupil personnel reports as presented.
Second.
If, board, board members will please vote. Motion carried.
And if there's no further business, we adjourn.